Tensley Williams.
Here.
Mr. Burks.
Here.
Ms. Feliciano Sims, Mr. Brunel, Mr. Callmore.
I'm.
Mr. Crochane.
Present.
And Ms. Ashley Barrios.
Present.
My pleasure. My pleasure gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, democratic, and just as a whole.
Is there any public discussion?
No, sir.
Student showcase, we have our athletes talk about their teams that made it to tournaments from both of ID.
Yeah, we just, we'd love to hear just a little from each of the captains from the teams or whoever came to represent each of the teams to give an update to the public on your season. We wanted to publicly recognize you for your outstanding achievements this fall. So, who wants to start? How about, okay, let's go. Field hockey. Come up to the, come up over here to the mic. You just tell us your names and then we'd love to hear a little bit about your season.
Hi, I'm Isabella Crochane.
I'm Katie Keen.
And I'm Cassidy Lawrence.
This season, we went sixteen, two and two. It was the first season that we made it past the first round of playoffs, so we're really proud of that. It was really fun. The team becomes your family, so we've all been playing for four years and you're probably gonna hear that a lot from most of the people here, but it was a great season. So, we're really thankful for our coaches and for the opportunity and the great players that we had.
Ms. Keen, can you just tell us about some, I heard some rumors that you broke some records this year. Could you share what those records might be?
I passed the one hundred point mark and then I also broke the school record. I think I ended up with one hundred and twenty-nine points. That's goals and assists. I'm not entirely sure how many, around that though.
Okay.
And then Belle and I will be playing on Sunday at the All-Star game for the West team in Boston.
And I think Cassidy and I both broke the fifty point mark this year.
Yeah.
Great. Congratulations. And you all, you planning to play next year?
I plan on playing in college. I'm thinking about playing at Mount Holyoke College.
Okay.
I don't have any plans yet, but I'd like to find a team to play on next year.
I'm looking to play club next year.
Excellent. Well, thank you and congratulations to your team.
Thank you so much.
So, who do, who do we have from running here, or from the cross-country team?
Pat Morrison.
Isaiah Lugo.
Ethan Dufod.
Tell us a little bit about your season. It's not over either, right?
No. Oh, we have the state meet this Saturday, eleven o'clock in Rentham. And we went ten and oh this season undefeated, won the Pioneer, no, negative. It's our fifth undefeated season in eight years and our fifth league title in eight years. We were second at the Pioneer Valley Championships two weeks ago. This most recent Saturday, we were second at the Western Mass final. Uh, yeah, that's D1. We were ranked within the top ten of the state this year.
So, what happens this weekend? It's at Rentham, but it's the state championship? So, is that, is that, are you running as a team or individuals running? Or both?
Yeah, our team will be running the varsity meet.
Excellent. Great. Anything else you wanna tell us about your season? Okay, thank you. Congratulations to you guys. All right, who, we have soccer here, boys soccer.
Alberto Bergos.
John Stevenson.
Uh, we're representing boys soccer. This year, we broke into the tournament for the first time since, what?
Yeah.
Oh, six.
About eight years.
And we broke into the rankings for the first time since oh nine. Breaking the highest was fifteenth. So, this year, we had a fun four years with the guys we had since freshman year, because a lot of us came from middle school to the varsity team. Yeah, fun group, lots of memories, lots of fun, especially breaking the playoffs with those guys. Something I will remember for the rest of my life.
Are you guys, are you ready to go this season or?
Yep.
What, are you planning on playing next year?
I'm not.
No?
Yes.
Okay. You can still play in our barrel.
Exactly.
All right, congratulations to both. Thank you for being here. And I think, I think just on time, just in time, I think we have the football team represented here. Are you guys ready to come on out? So, we just wanna hear a little bit about your, if you could just update people on your season. You obviously made the playoffs, so we'd love to hear a little bit about the season, the high, you know, the highlights, of course.
Right, so we had a much better season than I think anybody was expecting, coaches and players included. It was really great to see us, you know, come out and have a winning record this time, you know, get more than one win, six times as many wins as we had last year. So, that was a lot of fun. I think the coaches were really proud of us all. And I think the coaches are who we really have to thank for that.
Can you tell us your names?
I'm Owen Lavelle.
Okay.
I'm Bowen Keen.
And from what I understand, your season's not over yet.
Uh, no, it's not. We still have Thanksgiving left.
Okay, and did you play, and so people, who are you playing? What time? Where should they be?
On Thanksgiving.
All right, I can see that that's still a week and a half away, I guess, but.
So, we're playing on Thanksgiving. We're playing South Hadley. I think it's eleven? It's usually eleven, eleven AM, I think. Yeah, it's in South Hadley, South Hadley High School.
All right, why is this, why is it a special, why is it a unique Thanksgiving game?
It's the first annual Holyoke versus Chigaby, or, South Hadley, South Chigaby, South Hadley Thanksgiving game, not Chigaby anymore.
That's right, that's right, okay. Any other, any questions from the school committee, any of the athletes?
Yeah, thank you guys for coming here today. It's great, the accomplishments that you all have done and continue to do. But I'm just curious to know, how many are from Dean? Are, they're all Holyoke High? Oh, okay, all right, great. Just keep up the good work. Thank you.
As, how many, how many students, I guess my question would be, how many students are on the team that are from Dean? How many students did you have on your football team from Dean?
I think there were two.
Okay.
Mr. Brunel.
Yeah, I'm sorry I was late to miss the field hockey team and soccer and the other teams. I just wanted to, just the, I don't think, I don't, we mentioned it already, so I was late, but the article that was written a couple of weeks ago with the, I can't say the individual student saying that he was on the football team, but it was an amazing article that just talked about a high school and the football team coming together and stuff. And I just thought, you know, it was incredible. We had some tough week or so, tough two weeks at the high school last month. And I just thought that piece was a great article. It showed what type of students that we have, what type of student athletes that we have, and how proud that us in Holyoke should be, that there is some great things going on and there's some great students at the high school. So, that article, I was written in, if, maybe the individuals, maybe I can't remember.
Gio?
Gio.
Giovanni Carraschio.
It was a great article and I just thought it was, it was great for the team and, you know, congratulations on a very good season.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
I just wanted to congratulate all of the, all the athletes and so many of you I've known since you were very, very young. And I apologize for any assistant coaching that might have actually sent you off track that I was involved with. But I'm really, I can't tell you how proud I am of all of you. And I really do hope that, that you take this on to the next level and you give it a shot, you know, because I think that, that I've watched how many of you have transformed from really horrible basketball players, and I'm not gonna name any names, but, but just to outstanding athletes and just really, really great to watch all of it. So, congratulations.
Mr. Callmore.
Yeah, first of all, congratulations to all of you for a wonderful season. And I didn't notice that our volleyball team also made the tournament, so that's a great accomplishment, not only for our school, but for the city of Holyoke. And one thing I wanna specifically say to the football players is whether you won one game, two games, or three games and won the championship, the most important trophy you can ever receive in the history of sports is a sportsmanship award. And I'm very, very proud that the football team will receive the sportsmanship awards like the Western Massachusetts officials association. And just one other thing, thank the mayor and the parts commission and the board of public works for an excellent job in getting that field ready. And the city of Holyoke should be very, very proud because the MIA has selected Holyoke to represent not only Western Mass, but the whole state of Massachusetts in selecting Holyoke to participate and have their, all their games here in Holyoke this year. We have football, we have field hockey, we have soccer, we have volleyball. And it's a wonderful feeling that we have this great city of Holyoke and the wonderful facilities. That's the most important. We have the wonderful facilities here in Holyoke for sports or any other activity. I want to just thank all of you for everything.
Mr. Tensley Williams.
Not too long ago, I had two badges made up. And instead of you mess with kids, you mess with me. I am so proud of you kids. I, you guys have really represented Holyoke. And you brought us up to two notches and just keep up the good work. We love you so much. And if I could, I would get up and hug everyone. But it would take up too much time. So, just keep up the good work and know that the school committee, we're here for you.
I do wanna take a moment too to just read this email that I received about the football team, but it really could be from any team, from the Holyoke High Dean, the teams this fall. I've been really proud to watch, and my, this is now my third year here, to see the class and the character that our teams play with. We've had, you know, while there's always negative, that you hear a lot of negative things about Holyoke and the kids in Holyoke, it's impossible to, it's, I have continued, continually been impressed by the way we've conducted ourselves. And the feedback I get routinely about our students is always very positive. And, and this email came in unsolicited from the Minnichaw coach. And I don't know if you guys have read this email, but it was sent to me multiple times over the weekend. And Minnichaw obviously was the team that beat you in the playoffs. And Mr. Callmore and I were on that other far end zone. And there was no more exciting game. We were cold as heck at the game, but it was a tremendous football game. But more than the wins and losses and more than the fact that we've had a lot of success this fall, more than we've seen in the last couple of years, is, this is what is read, what the words in this email tell us about the character and integrity that our young people play with. So, this is from the coach who said, Dear Joe, to Joe Dutzar, I wanted to reach out to you and express both my admiration and appreciation to you and your program. I love our sport and love to see you perform with the decorum, with great character class and great play. Both your varsity and your JV demonstrated the above qualities when we played. As I told you after our playoff game, your kids played tremendously. And with two key players out on the last drive, did not hang their heads, just played harder. The game was so emotional and the dignity you all demonstrated after the game made me proud for you and our sport. It was more of the same at our JV game. Your kids played great and won. More importantly, showed class and sportsmanship throughout the game with a Minnichaw coach as a referee. I had been in this situation in my past and it was not handled this way. And there were problems. Both teams made the best of it, played hard, had fun, and showed tremendous respect and sportsmanship to one another. My understanding during, I guess there was a lightning delay. Our kids got together, talked, shared stories, and made it special. Joe, I just wanna congratulate you and thank you for doing an awesome job. This is what our game is about. I'm glad we have you coaching. Know we will be meeting a lot in the future in big games. It is nice to know when we play Holyoke, it will not just be with a good football team, but a class program. Your JV coaches were spectacular and kids were first class. If you wish, please share my congratulations to all of those associated with the Holyoke football program and its athletic programs. So, I think that's worth a big amount of time. Thank you to you guys, but also to all of you for representing us time and time again and showing off the best of our city. So, thank you very much.
Moving on to our communication reports, we have Ms. Barrios here from Dean. Just wanted to give an update for us all, or?
Yeah, um, so, that I heard of yesterday, our, all our seniors, we got a hundred percent grades, so we all passed for the first semester, uh, first quarter, was it? Yeah. So, as a senior, that's like really exciting for us. Um, we're really happy, because we weren't expecting it at all. Um, we have a lot of things coming up this year. We have fundraisers for all our stuff as a senior. So, I'm a part of the student government, I'm the treasurer. So, we're trying to get fundraisers like cookie, cookie sales, um, maybe in the spring, a car wash, uh, coin, penny wars, I think it is, and just different fundraisers to raise money for our class and our students, so we can have good prom, can have, um, nice t-shirts and just have a good year. And, yeah, we're doing really good right now in, um, in our classes. We have a good honors class, I'm a part of it, and everyone just, they seem to be on task. And a lot of our, not just seniors, but a lot of our students are, um, joining the Holyoke High Sports. So, I was a part of the volleyball team and I'm gonna do softball as well. And, yeah, it's really exciting.
Oh, so we gotta ask you, tell us about the volleyball team, because we thought the volleyball captains were gonna be here, so you guys had a great season too. You should have been in the.
Yeah, um, so we, yeah, we had a good season, we made it to playoffs. Our first playoff game was versus Central. Uh, we, that was our third time versing them. It was kinda hard, but we played our hearts out. And we lost, but it was good, because we made it to playoffs for the second year, I heard. Made it last year, we made it this year. We lost the first round, but it was good enough. We, we had a great bond with the team.
Maybe Mr. Peterson, you just kind of explain what she talked about a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, one of, one of the, uh.
Come to the mic.
Yep, sorry.
The someone can't understand, and I don't understand.
Good job, Ashley. She was nervous. One of the, one of the initiatives that, that Dr. Reich and his team have instituted this year is an on-track program, which means that we're striving to have all of our students on track to graduate. And students being on track for graduation means they need to be passing all of their classes. If a student is failing a class, they're no longer on track to graduate, because they need those credits. So, the team at Dean, who cares deeply about our children, really got into this and they really, they really owned it. And we had a senior meeting today. And as of quarter one, we did not have one senior that had one F on their report card. So, one hundred percent of our seniors passed every single one of their classes, which, you know, that's, you can't get better than that. So, we're, we're very happy that as of right now, all of our seniors that are here in this school will be on track to graduate in June. And we, we stay on top of this from the beginning of the year. So, we meet with the senior class throughout the course of the year to make sure that that happens. But we, we really have a good group of students that we're excited about.
Mr. Brunel.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's great. Congratulations on that. As I drive by daily basis, I see the ninety, I love seeing the ninety-seven percent attendance, which was awesome to see. And that might be a nice one for you tomorrow, we'll put up for the next few days.
Right.
But Dean, I don't think gets the, the positive attention that it deserves in these last couple of years, the turnaround Dean has been. And, you know, in due part to yourself and your staff and the students too, buying into the program. I don't think we concentrate on how much Dean has changed these last couple of years. And they really, you know, it's been great. I mean, community wise, prior, it was not such a good story.
Right.
Now, it's amazing. The same people who did not have positive things to say about Dean are so surprised and so enthusiastic about, uh, the changes going on there. And a lot of it is coming from people who were students there back in the eighties and early nineties. And now, they're really taking pride in the fact of Dean. So, congratulations. The only thing I'd like to see is to see if we get more participation from students with the athletic programs and other programs that the high schools.
I agree.
Offering, but that's wonderful that you participated. And it's just what a great chain, a turnaround it's been.
Thank you.
Mr. Dave.
How many seniors are there?
We have sixty-nine seniors.
Sixty-nine?
Yep.
And what's the total enrollment for the school?
About a hundred and eighty-seven right now. That doesn't include the freshmen that come in. So, with freshmen, we're over two hundred.
All right, considering with the freshman academy.
Correct.
From ten to twelve, it's a hundred and eighty-seven.
Correct.
Great job. I never lost faith in Dean.
Nor did I.
A lot of people in the community did, but I always had faith in Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
I think we have another student presentation as well.
Uh, we, we, uh, here, here about the superintendent's awards. And I'm gonna ask the two principals who are both here tonight to present their award winner. So, Mr. Peterson, while you're, since you're there, if you could introduce, just as a reminder, you can have a seat there. The superintendent's award is given annually. It's a certificate of academic excellence that is chosen by the school. It's presented to me and we are given one award for Dean and one for Holyoke High. And these are students that have distinguished themselves as tremendous students. But I know that the school's selected beyond just their GPA, was leadership qualities and their commitment to the, to the, to the school in general. So, I'll let Mr. Peterson introduce his award winner and we'll come up and take a picture.
Great. Uh, you know, it's actually very difficult to choose one student out of the bunch of wonderful kids that we have at Dean. Just amazing, amazing students. But we do have some standouts and Kiara Gonzalez is. Kiara, Kiara is a student that comes to school every day. She leads by example. She is incredibly respectful to her peers and to her teachers. She, she does excel academically, but she also excels as a leader. And not necessarily an outspoken leader, but somebody that leads by example. She's always working very hard and she's, she's really leading the way in showing other students how to act through her actions. So, very difficult to, to choose somebody, but Kiara is absolutely deserving of this award. So, I appreciate you giving it to her.
Good evening, everyone. Holyoke High School would like to present Isabella Crochane as our winner. Please stand, Isabella. When I started this summer at Holyoke High School, she was the first student I met. And that quickly turned into a series of interviews and pictures over the next couple of months. Her accolades are really superior. When you look at the entire body of her work at Holyoke High School, tremendous student, third or fourth in the senior class, tremendous student athlete, varsity field hockey starter for four years, an active member of her class, doing all sorts of fundraising and leadership roles, co-editor in chief of the Herald, which needs no introduction. It's just a superb publication and online media piece that the school does. And she's co-editor in chief, which, which speaks a lot for the work she does. But as a parent of, of two of my own daughters, I think what speaks volumes for me is the grace and class and humility that Isabella carries herself with around the school on a daily basis. All of the other stuff is tremendous. And you can receive plaques and certificates, but the other stuff is internal to her. And she is just a tremendous human being, leads by example. And, and that's why I appreciate as the principal, all that she gives back to the school and how she leads as a fine young lady and as an example to others. So, her GPA is her GPA. That was about eleventh on my list of reasons why she was selected. She's just an outstanding young lady and somebody I'm very proud of to have at Holyoke High School.
I'm just curious for both Kiara and Isabella, what are your plans? You're both seniors, so what's your, where do you see yourself a year from now? In short, yeah, so we can hear you, or whatever you're most comfortable.
Um, so I've been looking at colleges a lot more lately. Just this past weekend, I went toward Smith and then the next day with the Herald, I went toward Harvard. I don't know if I'm gonna get into Harvard, but I really hope to go to George Washington and study political science and communications.
I, I currently don't have the plans on what I wanna do, but I'm still exploring what I wanna do with the colleges that come and the field trips that we get.
Thank you.
Just stay away from Burtman, okay?
Kiara, Kiara, can I ask you one more question? Can I, can I ask you one?
You can.
You're taking a dual, you're taking a dual enrollment class at Holyoke Community College?
Yeah, I'm taking another class this spring.
Oh, and what are you taking, what are you taking now? Oh, you're taking one this spring?
Yeah.
Which one are you taking this spring?
Um, thinking of, we like, uh, early childhood.
Oh, great. All right, we're gonna have, we'll have, we have a job all lined up for you. Make sure you give the. Holyoke Public Schools. Make sure you give the guy with the tie on, give him your information.
Hire him.
Hire him.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You and your family.
Okay, thank you all. We're gonna, I'm gonna give you a quick, brief presentation about Gateway to College. This past weekend, before we get into the MCAS information, I can see I'm clearing out a room. This, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC, all paid for by not Holyoke Public Schools, but the Association of School, School Superintendents and the Association of Community College Presidents. So Dr. Royal, Christina Royale and myself went to DC. And we presented on Sunday on the partnership that Holyoke Public Schools has with Gateway to College, which is a really exciting partnership. Dr. Royal's on the, on the board for, or on the commission for community college presidents. And we had the opportunity to, to present to a small group, which included the, the head of the Superintendent's Association and the head of the Community College Association. And we also got a chance to learn from other innovative partnerships around the country. But I did wanna share, and if I can just get the clicker over here. Yes. So are, we do, this model, Gateway is a national model. It's not only a Holyoke Public Schools and Holyoke Community College model. But, and you have, I'm sorry, you do have a presentation in front of you. You have a copy of the slides. The reason you have it in your package is because you deliver the presentation till Sunday afternoon. So I did send it to you via email, but you have a hard copy here. But it started in Portland Community College and it's all over the country. But what we, what I've come to learn is that the model that we have is probably the most successful model in the country. And if you, if you remember, Stephanie Davalos used to work for, for me as the Chief of Staff. Her work right now, her job, is overseeing Gateway for the eastern part of the country. And so she, I just recently saw her and she made it clear that the model that we have is a model that people talk about around the country. So I actually don't need to go through with you the context of Holyoke, but this is a profile of the partnership. It's really intended for students who are on the verge of dropout, who have, who have either dropped out or on the verge of dropout, but have shown strong academic potential that have, that, that really just obviously deserve to get an education, but could, that benefit from being dual enrolled. So Gateway is a dual enrollment program where they're enrolled both at Holyoke High and Dean as well as the college. All the coursework, the entire experience happens at Holyoke Community College. But here you can see the demographics of their program. It's not just for Holyoke Public Schools. There are students from all over Western Mass, Springfield, Chickapie, Westfield, send students to the program. This is the profile of a Gateway to College student. Many of them are first generation, most students of color, typically female, and you can see what the average age is. Now this, now we decided two years ago, really a year ago at this time, to expand the partnership. And you've heard a lot about this Opportunity Academy and alternative pathways. Well, when we looked at the results for our students in Gateway, we couldn't believe the success that they were having. So we've quadrupled the number of kids or quintupled the number of kids, because historically, Holyoke has had twelve students attend Gateway. We always paid for twelve slots. And the cost per student is seventy-five hundred dollars, which is less than the per pupil that we receive from the state. All right. So before, beginning in 2010, Holyoke sent twelve students. Last year, we sent over fifty, and we anticipate sixty students being enrolled for this coming school year. The attendance rate is approximately eighty percent, which is almost as high as what we see in our high schools every day. And you can see the breakdown of Holyoke Public School. These are all only Holyoke Public School students. Percentage that are in DC of custody, parents, students of color, eighty-one percent are students of color. And our breakdown does follow women and males pretty much like the rest of the cohort, the rest of the cohort does. Now I'm gonna skip this because this is about, this is, well, this is what students say when they enter, and this is all students that enter Gateway. They talk about being disengaged, they talk about being unsafe, they, they talk about wanting to go to college, they wanna get a BA, but their experience in school has not been good. They've struggled with grades, they struggle with discipline, so forth. Now, if you look at this, this is really powerful. We did this survey last year of all the schools, and we surveyed our Gateway students like we did all the students. And the Gateway results were higher than at our, either of our high schools and many of our middle schools. And we surveyed kids from grades six and up. I mean, the rates of how positive or negative is the energy in the school? Eighty-eight percent of the students had a favorable response. Is your culture and native language respected at your school? Ninety-six percent of the students had a favorable response. The rest of our schools don't come close to that data. So it says something about the quality of the experience the kids, students, young people are getting in this program. Now, this is the Gateway results from 2010 to 2017. You can see the total amount enrolled, graduates, that's for all students, not just Holyoke students, Holyoke Public School students. This is our results. Now, when you, I'm not gonna ask you to do all the math, but the graduation rate here is higher than what our district graduation rate is, in terms of kids getting through. So our graduation rate has been sixty, you know, around low sixties. It was sixty, almost sixty-two percent last year. But their rate is almost to that level, if not higher, year after year for students from Holyoke that go to Gateway. The program is incredibly, incredibly successful. This is what students do typically after Gateway. This is, again, not just Holyoke students. These numbers are for all of their students. And Gateway to College is a national model. This is just some data about nationally, what the results look like. It's successful, it's successfully, it's successful across the country, but more successful here. What's really interesting is that the, that many of the students really struggle in their first term. One out of five students pass all their courses in their first term, which is a low number. But they will tell you that that is part of their secret sauce, because they set a very high expectation and a bar for students in their first term. They struggle, but then they come with a lot of support, support them. And they don't see students drop out. They retain them. But their data and for the students in their first term isn't necessarily high. Now, these are kids that enter with a one-point-four-nine GPA. So they, they're struggling students when they come in. And so the adjustment is tough. They're going from a high school campus to a college campus. But then they accelerate them over time while they're at Gateway. Skip over to here. So why the success, and Dr. Royal and I spoke a lot about this, why we think it's so successful. And she's coming in new. A couple of things. And it's something for us to think about as we talk about high school redesign. They're blending high school and college courses, classes in a college environment. So they're not just taking college-level courses, they're also taking remedial courses, and they're working their way up to college courses. But it's all done in a college environment. Progress is not measured by seat time. It's not measured by how long Devon Sheehan sits, sits in a classroom or how many hours they complete. It's, it's measured by accumulation of credits. So it's not necessarily by being a, finishing your freshman, sophomore year. And once you amass the number of credits, you can graduate. And you can go faster than a year if you can do more than a year. And for kids that are behind, Gateway can help them make up lost time. They, they have very creative course options and electives. HCC offers more variety than what we offer right now. So, which is not surprising. They also have access to all the college has, which is, you know, a library, you know, a library center, they have IT, they have e-tutoring, they have clubs, things that engage and motivate students, which is something we've talked about needing to ramp up in our schools. They, we do support students who are INPs and 504s. They have offices for students with disabilities. Any student that enrolls in Gateway automatically gets access to the college resources. They are considered a student at HCC and a student in HPS at the same time. We do give them credit recovery. It's not just FaceTime, so they have a chance to get credit recovery. They do focus on support, there's a lot of support. And I will say, one of the, and this isn't here, but the woman who runs Gateway, Vivian, is part of the secret success. She is an outstanding, outstanding leader. She has been there for a long time and she's built this model. And the care and the kindness that she shows every single one of her students is, is reflected in this data. They stay connected to the students once they leave and they move on to higher ed. And they're actively engaging them. They don't treat them as, you know, they, they, they take them out to the community, they do college visits beyond just HCC, and they're, they try to create a community feel for the students that are there. And right now, the majority of the students that are there are Holyoke Public School students, because like I said, we have, we, we will have close to sixty as we approach the second semester. Here are the challenges. And, and again, we, we spoke to this panel about this. I think the two biggest challenges for us is the funding. It's dependent on us, the district paying, you know, we, as you know, we reallocated funds to alternative programs. People, we don't have an alternative high school, but we do have alternative pathways, and this is one of them. But the funding's a challenge. While I do think it's a good deal, because kids are getting a good experience, it's not a warehouse, truly adding value to their experience, it's still, there's a cost involved. The other challenge is growing. We've grown it a lot in the last two years. We'd like to scale it up more, but we have concerns about impacting the quality of the program as you get larger and the scale gets bigger. The challenges are giving the kind of student support that we know these students need. And that, that's a challenge that comes with growth and scale, that we want our students to get the wraparound supports. Another challenge is they're seeing more and more unprepared students going to college. That's not just here, that's everywhere, particularly in math. And that's a challenge for any student going to Gateway, is the amount of remediation they need before they're able to access college-level courses. Having the right team is important, hiring the right team, that's a challenge. And then we also like, I mean, as I joked in this presentation, I don't like the fact there's multiple districts. I'd like it to just be a Holyoke Public Schools, HCC program. But there, they do have other districts and other partners. And so they do, they have competing interests, even though we're aren't their strongest partner. There are seven other districts that are part of the, you know, that send students to Gateway. And then another challenge is the local context. I mean, resources are tight, the challenges and the, you know, the, the same challenges we deal with in our school, schools, the students that come to Gateway obviously have those challenges. And they have many more, because these are students that have not been successful in the Holyoke Public Schools at some point. The other challenge about Gateway that's not here is that it really is for students who are older in their education. Typically, students who are seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, but their average age, as you can see, is in the seventeen-year range. So it, it's better suited for students that are older. It doesn't necessarily help our challenging freshmen, our, our freshmen that are, are struggling right now academically, behaviorally, and so forth. So I'm gonna stop right there. I'm, I'm, again, I'm encouraged about the, this relationship. I know that the, you know, HCC would like to see it continue to grow. And I know that the new president, Dr. Royal, is fully invested in continuing to see the success. Because I'm gonna tell you, this is as strong a proof point as we have in the school system right now, especially for kids that have been, have traditionally struggled in our school system.
Just a couple of questions. Do they have to take MCAS?
Yes.
Okay, they do.
They do. Any, any student whose education paid for by public dollars has to take...
Why do you know if there was over a certain age or whatever?
They have to take MCAS, yeah.
Okay, that was, that was like, it didn't say it on there, but I just wanted to make sure. And then secondly is, and you and I have had this conversation about, I mean, it's, it's great, it's wonderful that we're going out. Hopefully, we can, you know, keep it going. My other question is, is how do we expand it, you know, for the group in the, these kids, which we're identifying as these students? But even older students have to grow, parents, I would say, maybe parents of our children.
Yeah.
How, besides Halo, right, I mean, which, I mean, how do we get into the community more or into the, and maybe it's not a discussion for now, some other time, is how do we get the, the children? Because we want, the, the parents of the children who are having difficulties when the, if a child's going home and we want, you know, mom or dad or whoever that's home helping them with their homework and their studies, but they're not educated enough or don't have that education to be able to assist, are we, are we, is there any concentration or is there any effort gonna be made down the future so that we can help those parents? We have a large amount of people who have children at Holyoke Public Schools who cannot help their child at home, because they can't read or write. And I, I don't know if I introduced you to a couple, I think I did, people that I know very well, who, they went through the system, they went through Holyoke High and through Dean. They came out, they came out, graduated, they can't read, they can't write. And how are they supposed to help their child? And that's, you know, there's a large amount of kids like that, of, of parents like that who I think want to. And how do we help them is my, is my question? Because helping them is gonna help the students that we have now.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we do have Halo, and I think we, there are other adult education programs in the city through the Hutos Collaborative. I think we've gotta do more. And I would, I would just say, beyond just the families, there are many people that I meet in our schools or are in the community who would be great assets to our school district as teachers and other leadership positions, but they don't have their bachelor's. I mean, in some cases, they don't even have their high school degree. But, but would be huge assets to this school system. And you're right, we, there are many, many people that never, many of our parents now never graduated from our school system and they dropped out. So, yeah, I mean, and, and I know the mayor and his team have continued to be, to fund those opportunities. And the grant for Hutos is up again now.
Yeah. And I agree with everything you said. With our early literacy initiative, one of our biggest challenges is the lack of some parents be able to teach their children another specific training for parents that are unable to rewrite themselves, to still be able to impart that knowledge on their kids. But the Hutos Collaborative that Dr. Dreig mentioned, I know Holyoke Community College is, they're sort of our lead partner now on the HCC Adult Learning Center with their center in Holyoke and also in Lubbock. And they're looking to work, they already work with CEP, Holyoke Works, Halo, and the Care Center, but they're looking to have a more advanced role in it. A lot of it's state funding dependent. We also use some CG dollars to, to help support the smaller organizations, but there's always been a long waiting list for the adult basic education programs and not enough, not enough seats. But HCC has certainly played a, a great role with us in that. But, you know, I, I definitely agree with what you said.
Yeah, I just, I mean, back in the day, and Rodney, you can probably test this, they used to have a, a high school at night or something like that. I mean, I can tell you, personally, my father had a quit school when he was like sixteen or so, or fifteen, so he could work. And then went back, I'm not sure what age he was when he, he finished his high school at home, but it was a night school that they took. I'm gonna say he was probably in his twenties, mid-twenties or something like that. And it just, it just, it really is bothersome. And I come across a lot of these, these folks in Holyoke, you know, we, they can't get good jobs. They're great workers, but they can't get good jobs because they can't, you know, do as fundamental things. And how can they, and they, they love their kids, they love, they walk their kids to school, they love to help them out, they just can't. And just trying to find that would be a great, you know, and I, you know, it's kind of like this, but another level, continuing that level. So, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, it's a little older now. It's more of a citywide initiative too, because a lot of school districts are designed without the incentive to work. When it comes to the data that you're measured by, right, unless you're already counted as a dropout. So there's no sort of incentive around turnaround data to do that. But it's, it's a, it's a city goal and should be a school goal, linking those connections. And the school department does make investments in the, in the Halo program and... And the school department does make investments in the Halo program in happening there. It's amazing what the lives that they're changing in the Halo program. The state is also changing the way that you work force development, the AVE, where, you know, they're actually tracking these agencies to see if the education's turning into a job or a job placement, and it doesn't always the best measurement. But I think the state's now paying more attention to AVE than they were before. And we have to make sure that the, really the hundreds of adults we have on waiting lists are getting open spots here in the area.
I mean, my point is, if you want our young children, we have students to get better. We want them to go home, their parents to give them the help. We have to help, you know, the whole village, I guess you would say, the whole household to improve. And I think that is our responsibility as a school system, to make sure those, give them every single opportunity to improve. So, that's all.
Mr. Christian.
So, next year, it looks like we'll have 60 of our children going to this program?
Throughout the course of this year, we'll have 60 students.
Okay, so, right. So, budget-wise, you were saying the cost is an issue. Is it more of an issue for the college? Is it 7,500? It's, we don't get a reduction in what we receive from the state for these programs? So that's a net 10,000 per student?
Yeah, we do get a net from each of the, from each student that we send there, yeah.
So the more we, we're, the more kids we have that this would be appropriate for?
That's right.
The better off, we actually benefit financially?
Yeah, although, you know, it's also about maintaining efficiencies in our other, you know, other schools. As you move kids, it's also a question of like, of scale, because you're off, I mean, anytime you, we have grown to add additional students in our existing programs at, you know, Holyoke High, for instance. Like those 60 kids could still be enrolled, but for every 60, for every student we send out, that's 7,500 dollars that isn't necessarily going to run programs at Holyoke High or Dean.
What I was thinking was, potentially then, at 600,000 dollars. And what I was thinking was, like, this program, what's making these kids successful is that they're of an age and probably a maturity level where they thrive in this environment.
That's right.
And I'm wondering if we wouldn't have the same situation with some of the students in our junior high schools now over at Dean? And what if with that 600,000, we could facilitate maybe 60 of those students coming to Dean and looking at that and saying, okay, how can we fit you in? My last tour of Dean, I was blown away. Just everyone on task. And I wonder if with additional staff and support, what if we were able to get kids that were really on the brink of, you know, generally they're not gonna drop out, but you've got kids that really are having issues every day, maybe because of the environment? And before we have our junior highs in place, maybe that would be something to think about, you know?
Yeah, and we are actively talking about a middle school model here. I just wouldn't want it to be having a middle school program at Dean, but on this campus. But I don't know that, I wanna be careful that it doesn't become, because then it perpetuates the notion that the career technical space is just for kids who have had issues in their prior school.
Or maybe at high school, like maybe getting these kids, whichever camp. I just know that there's a lot of room there right now. You know, having only, I think we said 100, 187?
There's a ton of room, yeah.
And the capacity here is, what is it? It's like, our maximum capacity?
Eight hundred.
It's 800? So, I'm just thinking room-wise, I wouldn't wanna, well, anyway, I guess with the dual enrollment, there's probably situations where we have kids going off-campus to college. And I think we would have room in the high school as well. But that might be an idea, because that might be part of the problem. We might have kids that are actually older junior high school students that really might thrive in a high school environment. And we might have the same results. And it looks like it's kind of a win where we got this surplus, you know? I'm not saying we ever have a surplus. But, and the other question, a quick question I have is about the busing. So, transportation, who pays for the transportation?
We don't, we don't, they take their own, they take PETA there.
Okay, so that, so that's not even a concern?
No, we don't pay transportation.
Yeah, so that's great. Okay, so, anyway.
Well, we pay, we give them, you know, we pay their bus, you know, the bus fare, but we don't, it's already organized. Yeah, so, yeah, no, it is, it is, I will say to your question, two things. I think having a middle school at Dean makes, on this campus, makes a lot of sense, you know, I think. I'm not, I have concerns that it'd not be a place where kids who struggle all go to the same place.
Maybe it's either, based on their preference.
That being said, the model that this provides struggling high school students, we need to find a way to replicate something like that for struggling middle school students. We haven't done that yet. You know, we started to build out a middle school alternative program. But this is successful because of the model. We need something like that for middle school students, and really for ninth graders too. We have the Success Center, which is over at Ignelli, which captures some of those repeat ninth graders and struggling students. It's not as strong a program as this, though. And so that's something, you're right, we have to replicate something. And this, from a cost standpoint, this is a, I think is a good strategic use of resources. But not every alternative path is, yields the kind of results that this does.
Right. Is there something else? I guess I just have another question about the cost that you brought up. I was going to ask what Mr. Christian said. So, if the 7,000 dollar price tag on the program, so what is the challenge with the funding? If it is lower than the per pupil expenditure that we, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we allocated a certain amount of funding, and I have to look back at our budget, to Opportunity Academy, which was for all the alternative pathways. But for every student that goes out of one of the two high schools, that's funding that goes, that's pulled out of the total funding for the high school. So, it can't impact the types of programs and activities that they can offer, right? If you have, if the numbers get to a point that are, you know, in terms of having the wealth of different offerings.
Right, but I mean, if 20 kids left Holyoke High and went to Dean, I mean, if Holyoke High would get less money, then Dean would get more. So, in this situation, 60 kids are leaving both Holyoke High and Dean. They're going to HCC with a, with a 7,000 dollar check each, Holyoke Public Schools.
7,500, yeah.
7,500.
Yeah.
We are getting the remaining money that is allocated down through the state and the city. And where is that money going?
Yeah, so, yeah, so two things. I think we have to just be careful that, I don't want, I don't want to dismantle offerings that existed to high, to high schools.
Right.
All right? But I think the larger issue is, how much can HCC sustain of the number of kids?
No, I guess I'm asking though, so the additional money, the difference between what we pay and the tuition for Gateway to college, the money that is left over, where is it going?
It goes to, it's going to the high schools.
Okay, without having to educate those?
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
And then these students, when they complete their diploma, they're getting their diploma here at Holyoke High or Dean?
That's right.
Is there any advantage to setting up Gateway as a separate school?
We've looked at setting up Opportunity Academy, the whole alternative space as a separate school. There are advantages, it's not, it's, the state has not been, they pushed back a little bit on it. We, because it's not, we have multiple paths. We have the Success Center, we have some kids who are going to Lighthouse on our dime, and we have some kids that are at Gateway. We would want to make the whole conglomerate a separate school. So we are working on it. It hasn't been as easy as we would like.
But.
It's not just one, because it's not one physical building, there are multiple paths.
Right, I guess there could be multiple paths, if you think of like a 10-year period, I think things could change.
Right.
With what the path was, but talking about Gateway itself, I mean, Gateway has a larger, with 64 students that could really graduate at any time, from what we heard, they have a larger graduating class than Dean.
No, they don't, they don't all graduate there.
But you said they could graduate at any time. As long as they complete their, I mean, they, I mean, these students could complete at any time. Would there not be an advantage, I mean, if this program is similar to the same size of Dean, just setting it up as its own school? And then you would pull those students out from Holyoke High and Dean, and affecting the, what was perceived as the dropout rate at those schools anyways, moving the number, the student number over to this new school? And then it wouldn't, I mean, it just, I know other districts function with Gateway being a separate school.
Yeah, I think you're right, and I would like, but I would like to pull all of our alternative programs out of the, I'd like to make them all together one separate school. I mean, that's why we call it Opportunity Academy. To me, that should be a separate code, have its own separate code.
And why is the state not like you're?
We've gone back and forth with them on it, because it is so, it is so new. It's something that's just emerged in the last year. And we never, we didn't have this level of number of students who weren't being educated in the, in our high schools. I think we can achieve that for next school year. And I think we should push for that to happen. Because the other thing they get, the schools are frustrated with is the attendance rate tends to be lower, a little bit lower at Gateway and then on our other programs. And it affects the attendance rate at Holyoke High and at Dean. It does affect dropout rate, it does affect the graduation rate. And they don't have direct control over what happens in those programs.
So when should we expect an update from the state of when this is going to be a move forward or not?
I think, it can't be done for the school year, but I think over the summer, as we prepare for the upcoming school year, I'd like to see it be a separate school. But not just Gateway, though.
No.
All of Opportunity Academy, yeah. So I will look for an update this summer.
Well, hopefully for now. I mean, if we're opening up, like, in the school, like, I would assume that going into the budgeting process, you're gonna need to know if you're running something that's really a different school overall. Because per pupil expenditure going into Holyoke High School would be much different if you had it in its own separate school.
But it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't change, it doesn't, it doesn't change the design of what we have right now.
Well, it would be, because that student's money, the full amount.
The full amount, right, right.
Would travel with the student to fund all of the alternative programs. Any other questions? This is Colin.
Just seeing your Dr. Royal being part of this, and I think as a school community, we should thank her very much and welcome her into the city of Holyoke as a partner in our educational system. And I think it's a wonderful thing that we have a nice president here at Holyoke Community College.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, not to bait the issue any further, but don't you think that the, one of the reasons that the Gateway is successful as it is, is that they're not, that they're in a college-type setting? Whereas I think, definitely what you're kind of saying is, put them into a, back to a school setting?
No, no, I'm saying set it up as a separate school.
Right, but I mean, they're not, they wouldn't be on campus.
No, yes, they would, I mean, when I say a separate school, every school and district assigned a number from the state. Instead of them being the number that followed at Holyoke High or Dean, make them their own school. Location doesn't matter, but the physical thought that these students are not students at Holyoke High. And because right now, every Gateway student is either accounted for as a student at Holyoke High or Dean. So they are handed their diploma from Holyoke High, and they complete the Holyoke High or Dean requirement.
That's the same with our other programs.
And so, exactly, as I was saying, it brings down the, it can bring down the attendance rate, it can bring, like, all those differences, when they're not under the purview of either place.
And their M-.
A school, but have them still go. Like a school code, make their own school code.
And their MCAS scores do count for school, they do.
Okay.
And so, you know, when people say, you look at the data, we're, you know, and you're gonna hear a little more about the data, we are including more kids in our schools than we didn't have these programs before. So, in some cases, these kids were enrolled at Holyoke High or Dean in the past, or they just dropped out of school, they weren't in school, right? So we are, we do, we are retaining more kids in the system.
I can see that it's hurting the data, but I mean, more than hurting, it helps me because we're accelerating the graduation rate, because we have more students that are connected to school and spending and graduating. And it's efficient, you send the check, they're doing great programs, don't worry about overhead or hiring staff, you know?
No, I do think you're, I think the point about the separate code, I think we have already begun those discussions with the state. I would like to see that happen moving forward. So let's check on that before the end of the story.
Mr. Cowan?
Yeah, pertaining to athletics, do these students participate in any athletic programs?
They can.
They can?
Yeah, and they do. I mean, I know that there was, I know there was a, I know for a fact there was a soccer player who was in Gateway. And so they are still, because they're still students of our high school, so they participate athletes.
So that, so that would be a doubt, if they're in Gateway, could they participate as a separate school? They'd still participate in that, is that where you're going with that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they could participate, yeah.
All right, well, that's great, okay.
They would have access to any of the other students that are.
Sounds like no downside to that.
If it was an old school, it'd probably outperform both Holyoke and Dean?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, not if there was all eight alternative programs, probably not, right? If you put all of them in one school, then probably not. You're probably gonna be slightly lower, I would guess, based on just the broad numbers that we're comparing.
Right now, we have kids in three different places, like the same gateway. We have kids in Lighthouse, and we have students at our Success Center, which has another 50 or, it can take upwards of 50 students. And that's connected with Halo at the Ignelli Center, so we have students there as well. Those tend to be more struggling students and younger students.
And the graduation rates of those students, not nearly with the Gateway?
Nowhere like this, no.
That might bring it, is it, okay, so.
And we still haven't been able to formalize a partnership with the Care Center, because I know we have young mothers who drop out, go to the Care Center. It'd be great if we would be able to work with them, so they're not counted as dropouts as well. I know I've been talking about it for years, but it just makes sense, you know?
Yeah.
What's, what is the thing holding that up?
Yeah, I'd rather not get into all of that now, but I think a lot of it has to do with, again, what the, a lot of it has to do with resources, like what is the per pupil going to be for those students? In this case, in the case of Gateway, it was very clear, it was 7,500 dollars. They were gonna run all their education, they get, you know, so with the Care Center, I think, there has been a willingness to talk, we just haven't been able to formalize with that number.
Because they're not getting any district money now, but they're still serving our former students. So it seems like a win, and if I need to help, look, you know, because I've talked to him many times.
So, MCAS data next.
So, we're going to just give you a little summary of our experience with our first round of the Next Generation MCAS results for our three to eight and our high school MCAS results, which is the legacy, the formerly, former MCAS that's still being used at the high school level. So, everybody probably knows that the state put in a new assessment system that is a revised format of the assessment, and it's, in many cases, it's electronic. In fourth to eighth grade, it was electronic this past year, where kids took the test on a computer. And in some schools in Holyoke, they took it at every grade level on the computer. This school year, every grade level will be assessed on the computer. But tonight, we wanted to just share the results of that first round from our first implementation. And just to be aware that this assessment has a new performance benchmark. So, in the past, where the results were advanced, proficient, needs improvement and warning, for third to eighth grade, the performance benchmarks are meets expectations, exceeds expectations, partially meets, so it's a different kind of a benchmark, and much higher expectations. So given that, these results are not comparable to past MCAS results. So we're starting with a new, a clean slate, and looking at where we are with this, these assessment results, and moving forward, determining what we'll do in regards to curriculum and support and analysis and response to data across the school year.
Buenos dias, good evening. You didn't even introduce yourselves, Mary. Let's start with that.
I dive right into the.
She was diving right into the results, so this is Mary McAndrew.
Yes, I'm the Director of Instructional Leadership.
I'm Luis Soria, Chief Academic Officer, Assistant Superintendent. So just gonna, we have a slide that we want to share with you. It's sobering results, I'll be honest with you. When you see these results, we want you to understand a couple of things, right? This is the current reality where we're at with student performance. And we're also gonna show you student growth percentile, and how are they growing over time? So it's actual proficiency rates now, and then how they are. So it's actual proficiency rates now, and then how they are moving in comparison to the rest of the state. But most importantly, what are we doing next? And how can we attend to the students' needs sooner than later, based on information that we currently have with STAR assessment, which I talked about the last time that I was presenting with you? So we're going to, as Ms. McAndrew described, there are four levels now, it's different, right? So you can either be not meeting expectations on the lower side, partially meeting expectations, meeting or exceeding. Today, we're going to feature only those students that are meeting and exceeding the expectations as measured on this brand-new assessment. Couple of things, right, to review, it's a more rigorous assessment. The scale scores of how students perform are at a different level, and it's renorming for everyone. So it's baseline data in terms of a restart, here's the refresh, right? And it is sobering data in terms of when you see how are our students performing across school. So you'll see at the one end, Donahue School for Reading and Math, blue is ELA, English Language Arts Reading, and the orange color is the math performance. And then we're only looking at grades three through eight on this slide in terms of the percent of students that are meeting or exceeding as on the top two levels. We have a lot of students that are partially meeting, and we're not showing you that this evening because we want to really aim for that higher standard, right? But many, many students that are partially meeting the standards, which are at the tipping point. When Jenny Malabey is our data strategist, she organized this data. And she and I met last week, and we're talking about how, how many students do we have that are at that cusp, at the tipping point? Turns out we have a lot. So we still got to figure out how we move them from that partially meeting to the meeting and exceeding level. Different here is the grade level. So you'll see the district bar graphs at the beginning, and then you see the high school at the end. What's important to note about high school is that the, this is the legacy assessment. This has not changed, right? This is not a new version. We have a pilot of that happening as we're moving forward. But now, how are we doing, for example, a grade three? So there's been a heavy emphasis on early literacy, new ways of instructing the students with foundations, focus on K two. And so how are we seeing that progress in comparison to the others? And how do we build whatever success we are having with third grade as we move forward in a more aggressive manner? Now here's student growth percentile, I'll have Mrs. McAndrew talk about this.
Yep, so this is the student growth percentile for the district at grade three through eight. For grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then up through ten. And ELA is in blue, so you can see we have a ways to go with our, at different grade levels with reading and math. But we have some SGP showing more so in the eighth grade, the seventh and eighth grades. So we want to think about what's, what supports have been happening at those grade levels that help those students to have a greater growth percentile. And again, replicate the same kind of support in those grades where there is less evidence of student growth percentile.
And so the idea is like, where are the students landing? How are they performing in terms of their actual scores that they're receiving? And then the other way to look at it is, are they growing? And what's the comparison of the growth to other students in the state? So you would say, all right, ideally, fiftieth percentile rank for SGP indicates that they're keeping up with the rest of the students that are assessed at that grade level. If you look at grade level eight for reading, we're at forty-nine for the SGP, which is the closest to the baseline, the foundational data of fifty, and everyone else is below that. So we would say, okay, although we are concerned about their actual performance, we have some hope in their growth in that these numbers are higher. You just have to figure out what can we do now? What evidence do we have now? What measures do we have now that enable us to figure out, determine what can we do in terms of elevating the growth percentiles? So we're looking at two things, higher attainment level and higher growth as we move forward through the years. One way to do that is through STAR assessment. We talked about that last time. This is a correlation study that Jenny Malabey did for us. And as you look at that line of going up from the corner, from the left-hand bottom quadrant to the upper right-hand quadrant, ideally, in a correlation, you would see a thinner line. So there wouldn't be such a wide disparity, there would be a closer alignment for the correlation. What we want to pay attention to is that upper right quadrant. So we look at students who did well on STAR, who also did well on MCAS, right? So how do we correlate supporting those students who did well at the beginning, at the end of the year, and enable them to feel like they're getting the supports that they need so that they perform well on MCAS? You can see on the left-hand side, in the bottom quadrant, this idea that students who are performing lower in terms of proficiency and percentile rank in STAR also performed lower on MCAS. So there's strong correlation between how do we say the students are doing on one assessment, and how does it relate to how they will do on the other assessment, high-stakes summative assessment? This is for reading and math. And the next one, sorry, that first one was BLA, this is math.
And so similarly for math, you'd want to see that same, a more narrow line. But you can see that there's really a strong relationship between how students perform on STAR and how they perform on MCAS. And so with STAR, we have this opportunity across the year to use that data to, to set goals with students. And what we need to be thinking about with that is the STAR benchmark is set on that slide for fifty because that's what the nationally-normed assessment, it defaults at a forty percentile, but park expectations was a fiftieth percentile. But what we noticed when we analyzed the reading data, that students that scored at the sixtieth percentile are those, those that met or exceeded expectations on reading. And students that scored at the seventieth percentile on math in STAR are those that scored meeting or exceeding expectations. So we really need to work across the year with supporting the analysis and response using that higher expectation of sixty percent for reading and seventy percent for math.
So we would ask, okay, so we've invested in the STAR assessment, right? To help us determine what we need to do to support the students sooner than later. So we did, if you remember, STAR is implemented three times per year, at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. So we have really hot data that informs us about how to address the needs of the students. So if you remember, beginning of year, early literacy is foundational literacy skills for grades K and grade one. So here's the percent of students that are at or above the fiftieth percentile rank assessed now, but for the end-of-year expectations. So we're assessing them now for what they should be able to accomplish at the end of year for kindergarten and first grade. So here's early literacy. And there's not a separate slide for math because math skills for foundational numeracy skills are embedded in the early literacy assessment. Again, fifty percent is where we place the measure. Renaissance STAR says, if you're at forty percent, you're doing well, you're doing okay. But what we've learned is that we need to elevate that, so we're going to have to lift that all the way to sixty percent. So you see MedCaf at forty-nine percent, Morgan forty-one percent, and then the other schools. This is the percent of students who are at or above the fiftieth percentile rank. And moving forward is reading.
Yeah, so similarly at reading, so this is in grades two through twelve for our beginning-of-year reading assessment. And you can see that at MedCaf, which is two, grades two and three, they exceeded, they had a greater number of students exceeding the fifty percentile benchmark. And so we want to think about how to support those teachers across the year in using that data so that they, we have growth across the year towards that higher benchmark of sixty percent.
And then at grade three, we assess them in math as well. Here they are at the beginning of the year by school, the percent of students that are at or above the fiftieth percentile rank on STAR assessment that we just finished completing. And the middle of the year will be coming forward as well. All right, so that's a lot of data, that's a lot of numbers. More importantly, we wanted to discuss, well, what do we do now, right? But how do we support the students to perform better, not just on the assessment, but to what John Purnell was talking about earlier, right? So how do we ensure the students are college and career ready? So the assessment is one thing, right? So we take tenth grade MCAS, if we tell the legacy, when they graduate, how are we ensuring that they have the right skill set? And what is the state saying in terms of steps that we can do? The assessment is more rigorous, and it's challenging students in a way that perhaps they hadn't not experienced. So one thing we start with first in response to the data is to take a closer look at the standards. So what I did for you guys is presented with you the Massachusetts Frameworks Fifth Grade English Language Arts Standards. There are anchor standards, and then there are sub-standards. If you look at the very first one, right, here's number two, standard number two for key ideas and details. So here's what the fifth graders have to do. They have to determine a theme, they have to find details from the text, they have to report and respond to the challenges of how the speaker in a poem reflects about a certain topic. So if you think about a poem and a poet, what is the poet trying to portray via verse in a poem? It's aligned to the details within that and aligned to a theme. That's just one part of it. Second, craft instruction, they have to determine the meaning of words and phrases. So you look at a phrase within a poem, and then you determine what that meaning is explicitly in the text, and then infer from that. And remember, we did this in college. We're asking fifth graders to do this. And then lastly, we say, okay, can you compare themes and topics, right? Can you compare a theme or a topic across multiple passages? So I'm going to show you an example, right? So here's a fifth grade example. All right, oh, that's really small, so I'll read it out loud to you.
We have it.
Oh, okay, great. So I will do my best to recite this poem for you. I'll read it off on my screen as well. All right, so there are two poems. This is, this is released from Desi this past year, right? This is actual assessment for the fifth graders. There were two poems, and the two poems were about a museum. And the two poems, eventually the students had to say, okay, when you look at these two poems, what's the overall theme? And how do they compare? But here's question number one, right? Here's the first poem, I'll read it to you, it's entitled "Museum" by Phyllis Hallman. Pictures on the wall, look into lives, back when I was not anyone at all. They smiled, frowned, played chess, walked to town, pat heads of children, see them to their beds. They seem so real and near, but they are fixed there on the wall, and I am here. Student reads that poem and then answers this first question. What two lines, one through five of "Museum," mainly suggest about the subjects of the pictures? A, they were famous, B, they lived long ago, C, they had many children, or D, they were related to the speaker. Here's the thing, if you go back to the previous slide, this is what fifth grade standards are. Teachers are responsible for teaching a theme, for ensuring that the students know details from the text, to realize how the speaker in the poem reflects upon the topic. We're also asking them to determine what the words and phrases mean so that you can respond to questions. And then eventually, you got to compare this poem with another poem. So the assessment is not saying, what are the key details? Or what does the poet say? You've got to interpret what is being written within the poem, and then you've got to remember, what did the first five lines indicate to you as a reader of that poem? The assessment is rigorous, the assessment is challenging. And what we need to do is determine, how are we preparing students to not just understand the standards? How are we preparing teachers to unwrap these standards so they feel comfortable, like, yeah, I understand the standard, I know where we're headed? And then how do we unpack these questions? We would ask teachers, are we convinced that we're asking and supporting students to be at this level of assessment? Right, and what we need to do now? So we're going to share with you, like, where are we headed as a district in terms of supporting teachers? Here are our next steps.
So we've been providing, we have.
The answer.
What do you believe Dr. Wright gives the answer? What are you, with the, yeah, so I was trying to be kind, in case you got it wrong. So if you look at the first five lines, right, if you think about this, these are young students, they're fifth graders, and we're reading these first five lines. The pictures on the wall, look into lives, back when I was not anyone at all. Right, so now you have to infer, what is the poet telling you related to that you weren't even existing yet? So the pictures on the wall are about people. So imagine you're an English language learner. Here's a question. What two lines, one through five of "Museum," mainly suggest? So we have to unwrap the word mainly about the subjects. So an English language learner has to understand that the subjects are about the people in the pictures, not subject like math. The question itself is so complicated. And if I'm learning, and let's say that we were in France, and we don't speak French, and you're giving this test in the English, go at it. It's tough. And so when we say, okay, you have to infer now, we're talking about the people in the pictures, right? And what they are doing, and I was not anyone at all, which indicates that I was not yet born. So this would say that these are subjects in photos, in paintings, that lived long ago. This is not the eighth grade version, this is not the tenth grade version. We're asking fifth grade students to answer these questions. Okay, so let's keep talking about this, the, before we ask questions, because I don't believe in questions, please. I do want to talk about.
Well, I just wanted to respond.
Yes, please.
I've learned a lot of poems in the fifth grade, and one was, "When I was a beggarly boy, I lived in the cellar damp. I had not a friend or a toy, but I had a leather lamp. When I could not sleep from the cold, I had fire enough in my brain. And built it with roofs of gold, my beautiful castle in Spain. Since then, I have toiled day and night, I have money and power good store. I give all my lamps of silver brights for the one that is mine no more. Take fortune, whatever you choose, you gave and you snapped again. I have nothing to pay me to lose, for I own your my castle in Spain." So, you know, you're on, you're on my address right now with poems.
Yes.
In the fifth grade, I wrote a whole lot of poems. Thanks, I'll still remember.
It's interesting when we study about poems, right? So in expeditionary learning, if you remember, expeditionary learning is the English Language Arts curricula resource that we're utilizing in Holyoke Public Schools. I had the privilege of co-teaching fourth grade at Kelly with Amy Peigra, and the poem there was "Stopping on the Woods by a Snowy Evening" by Robert Frost. And the kids were blown away that I had memorized that poem, they were like, I can't believe it. So poetry matters. Poetry is important, and we're learning it in Holyoke Public Schools. But how do we ensure that students are analyzing it? Right, how do we know that students are analyzing the intent of the poet? So let's go back to this then, right? So where are we headed in terms of next steps for our teachers and our students? Hard-working teachers in Holyoke Public Schools, like, I don't want anyone to ever forget that. That the teachers are working hard. But to Dr. Wright's point, he always says, I feel like the teachers are working harder than the kids. Like, how do we have cognitive sweat with students to engage in rigorous thinking about, what does this poem really mean? And by the way, you're learning English, so let me help break this down for you as we're exploring this. Here's where we're headed.
So we have structures for three different groups to have ongoing learning. So our coaches and our school leaders have ongoing learning around curriculum planning and around the standards. And we have a structure for powers teachers from every, from each school that engage in learning around really unwrapping the standards and identifying the learning that's required for students to meet the standards. And so we're trying to build that capacity of these hard-working people to have this ongoing support that will help us to help our students meet those standards. We're emphasizing more around the practices that will get the students doing more of the work than the teachers doing more of the work in the classroom because the standards require that the students are really thinking and really producing, speaking and writing about these topics and tasks so that they can be better prepared to get feedback and give feedback around their progress towards a standard. There's, actually, we talked a lot about the monitoring of data. So you heard earlier about the OnTrack data. We also have this opportunity with our STAR assessments across the year. We give them district-wide three times a year, but teachers can use them as frequently as they want to monitor progress around specific standards. to monitor progress around specific standards. And that also provides the opportunity to talk more about the learning required by the standard. We have our district dashboards and our interim assessments that help, that provide opportunity for more discussion around this aggressive monitoring of student progress across the year. We have sustained and targeted professional development through our, each school having their own collaborative time with teachers. We have our Holyoke University structure where there are a number of courses aligned to teacher needs and teacher choice. And we have the Building Excellence Schools Support for Leaders that is helping to strengthen the instructional lens and the leadership focus for each of our principals. And then we're really focusing heavily on, in every conversation, making sure we're attending to the needs of our English language learners. As Louise was just doing, thinking about, when we look at a question like that, what is the language acquisition expectation for a student to be able to success, be successful on a question like we just looked at? So we always wanna have that lens of looking at all the work that we're doing.
And so that's where we're headed. It's all about ensuring that teachers feel supported, number one. How are we supporting teachers so that they feel that they're headed in the right direction with their students, right? And how do we support students who are struggling? And when we encounter students that are performing low on STAR assessment, what do we need to do quickly so that they feel like they can continue to make progress? So that we're not waiting at the end of the year when MCAS comes out and we discover all these students are not prepared in terms of the type of standard that's required at the grade level and the type of questioning on MCAS via these recently received, released samples.
Can I just jump in? Just something about, from my perspective, I think where I see, I just wanna share some, where I think there's some good news and where there's cause for concern. I think in the younger grades, we continue to see some good results on our STAR assessments.
In early literacy.
In early literacy. The third grade results are, while never, I mean, the proficiency levels are way too low. We are seeing that the investment in early childhood is making a difference as kids come up through the grades. And so I'm encouraged by that. I, I'm not surprised by our ELA data. I think in a district that has a lot of English language learners, the test is very challenging. It's a shift in expectation level from the previous, from, you know, we took PARC last year, and the year before, we took MCAS version 1.0. I mean, it's a huge lift for our teachers and for our students. So I'm not shocked by the ELA data. The math data, to me, is incredibly, incredibly troubling. And it's surprising, and I've said this to my team, while ELA is a challenge, ELA is an area where we know we have a lot of children developing language. But in math, it speaks to other systemic issues around pacing and curriculum. We implemented a new math program last year, so there's the shift in adopting new materials. So again, I just say that with math, we have to really carefully look at pacing, when we teach certain content, the expectation level in those classes, the new materials that we've adopted, because the results, to me, are lower than I would expect. And the growth percentile math is particularly troubling. And so we have begun to look at the course sequence over the high school level and the middle school level. We are partnering with a high-performing charter school with two of our middle schools so that, you know, to give extra support to our teachers. We have partnered with Leslie University around some of the content on the MCAS with professional development. But math has to be an area that schools should pay much more attention to. Because I do feel like in literacy, you have some other foundational pieces in place for students as they move through years. In math, not so much. And that has to be a cause for concern for us, which is brutal.
Just two questions. When you're looking at the MCAS results, okay, do we take, do we look at the actual students' grades and compare so that perhaps what you think that a student that is performing above that 60%, or 50%, whatever the level may be, is doing, you know, Bs or Cs plus? Is it always the case? Or is it, when we look at when they, they're doing, you know, C, average, and above, but are failing MCAS? Do we have that type of data?
We do. So last year, we trickled down the theory of on-trackness, right? To be on track to middle grades. So if you remember, the K-5 report cards are a little different than the others, and we're working on that this year. But for example, in grade six, seventh, and eighth grade, we look at whether you're on track. Are you earning an A, B, or C in reading and math? And do you have at least 93% last year attendance? So then we would look at, this is the comparable data that we would look at. How are you doing, how are you graded on reading and math? What's your attendance? Are you coming? How did you do on STAR? And then how did you do on MCAS? So taking a full scope, a full profile of a student, right? Are you coming to school, first of all? How are you doing in terms of your grades? How are you doing on STAR? And then ultimately, how did you do on MCAS? Last year, we did this really comprehensive study to be able to take a look at kids even before MCAS to say, listen, you're earning a B. It's clear you understand numeracy skills, literacy skills. You're doing well, you're doing the work, but you're bombing STAR. Why? Is it because you don't understand how to do the assessment? Is it because you're going too fast? What is it? So now STAR even tells us how long the student took to take that test. And so when we identify a student, well, you did the test in six minutes. No wonder you bombed it. That report tells us this. So we get the student back on and say, take your time. Show us what you can really do. And the beauty of that assessment as well says, here's a skill set that this particular student really needs in terms of math skills or literacy skills. But then the complication comes when the teacher looks at that, has to follow a pacing that Dr. Reich is saying, like, I've gotta keep pace, 'cause I gotta get to this content. I don't wanna be a page-turning teacher. I've gotta teach this content. But I got a whole core group of kids that aren't understanding these basic skills. So what's the, how do we support those students that remain struggling while keeping on pace, while taking a look at their STAR data? This is where it gets so complicated for us. And so what do we need to do? Like, which of those takes precedent? The pacing of it? To make sure that you're exposed, that you're learning this curriculum? Addressing your individual needs, you're bombing these sections? Or you're not even trying? Like, how do we motivate you as a learner? It's very complicated, right? And the teachers are doing their best in terms of like, where do I prioritize my energies over time? But to answer your question, the original question, yes. We're looking at kids at a very comprehensive way.
But my question is, is what percentage of those, I mean, it used to be, last few years ago, was, you know, the teachers are teaching for the test.
Yeah.
And, but are they actually, are they-
Learning.
Are they learning? Because are the students that are getting Cs, you would think a student that's getting a C above is gonna pass the test or come close to passing the MCAS. You would hope. But my question is, is what is the percentage of those students who are on track are not passing MCAS?
I don't have those numbers on my fingertips. I can't get them to you.
But I'm just saying, do we have those?
We do have those numbers.
I'd be interested to see what the-
Yeah, I'd be glad to-
Is it a large number? And so if that's the case where they're getting grade, you're getting grades to go into the next grade, are they really getting those grades?
That's right.
Right.
Are they really getting those?
Are they earning the grades? And secondly, are we assessing proficiency or effort? So this is a larger question that we still need to address in Holyoke Public Schools in terms of, well, you didn't do your homework, or there's a participation grade, or whatever, a number of things. As opposed to, do you absolutely understand? And what evidence do we have that you've learned this so that we're assessing the right thing? By the way, you got a B. So this is a larger, complex question that we're diving into now.
And my last question, and I have a footfall, Dr. Reich.
We'll come back to it. Because there's a lot of people picking up on this, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, I think there is a lot here. There's a lot of telling data throughout the, you know, starting at Gateway and leading up to where we are now. Talking about pacing, just to offer, just to know what's talking about, too, is that in some classes, if you're teaching and you're overburdened with teaching, you have a large number of students who aren't getting the content, you have to slow down with your pacing. And there's some classes, by the end of the year, haven't covered all the material that they're able to cover, that they should have covered according to MCAS. You're gonna see some things on that MCAS assessment that haven't been covered. And so those points, probably, the students won't do so well in those points. The thing that I'm disappointed about with this is that over the past four years, they've done four different assessments, been looked at four different ways. And I think that most teachers are having a hard time keeping up with those expectations, and the students are having a hard time making those changes. That's a quick time to make a change. Over the summer, oh, this is what I expect you to know. The next summer, I expect you to know something different. And now there's a new baseline, and nothing for us to see how far we've come as a district since five years ago. I think that it's, in one way, it's a good thing, but in another, it's not so good. Because as we've seen tonight, the caliber of students that Holyoke is producing, and we see it on other nights, too, is that the most telling statistics are data, I think, of those 10th grade MCAS students. Those are the schedules that changed in 2019. And so over the past four years, we've seen different expectations from the state, and it's been really difficult. We're talking about student support also. I don't think that it's the quality of instruction in the classroom isn't the curriculum. I think that our students are more than capable of learning these things. But I, when you see what happens in, why, one of the data points I was mentioning in Gateway Arts was a survey that was taken once. What's better about Gateway? And it was, they feel safer than they did in their previous school. And I think a lot of students now kinda feel that way in third and eighth grade. When you talk to parents who have decided to throw their kids out, safety was the number one issue. It's not opportunity. It's not lack of quality of instruction. It isn't anything like that. It has more to do with safety. I see once the, if there's a culture shift in the schools, then you're gonna see a shift in test scores as well. And I think that that's something that was very telling tonight. The other thing I saw is that 55% reading percent, percent rating in MCAS. And then what happens when those students go to other schools? And then mixing with students who haven't had the pre-day experience, where that pre-day experience is so valuable. And that expanding that pre-day experience throughout the schools is incredibly important. And those are the things that I got with. I think that the safety in schools is a big issue more than the, you know, quality of instruction and what we're doing. I think the other thing that people have mentioned throughout the years, I mean, we've done survey after survey, there's the task force after task force. But those things, like smaller classrooms and our parent professionals valuing enough of getting utilized so that we can take those groups and have real tiered instruction where the teachers aren't working so hard and they can delegate their authority to the parent professionals in order to be able to make smaller groups and make instruction more effective for those students. And I think I'm gonna stop there. I have, and the other question, the question I had, too, was that partnering with the charter school, which charter school are the schools partnering with? Are all the schools making that partnership? And what is the partnership, what does that partnership look like?
Just Ian White and Donnie Yu with Handling Charter Math and Science around professional development in math.
Just teachers?
Teachers, yeah. Yeah, and actually, it was a DESI grant that they wrote. And it came with also two promo cards, one for Ian White, one for Donnie Yu, because they're using technology for intervention in the assessment. And so they're gonna be partnering with the assessment.
The other thing I brought up, too, was ELO students. Is the next generation MCAS going to be offered in other languages, especially for the students that were getting from Puerto Rico? And do we know what assessments they were taking in Puerto Rico? How comparable are these assessments? And not just for them, but even students who have been there who don't necessarily speak the language, or they speak English, and maybe they would take the test better in another language, is that being offered to our students?
The state doesn't offer the MCAS in another language right now? And for people that are, students that are first-year students in the country, they have the option of taking it, but after first year, they have to take it.
A student from Puerto Rico wouldn't even have that option, right? It's an immigrant student who's given that opportunity, right?
I'm not positive on that, actually.
Well, I think it's an immigrant student.
Yeah.
That's actually classified as a student-
As a newcomer?
As a newcomer, not someone from Puerto Rico.
Because they're migrating. As opposed to immigrant-
As the state classifies as an immigrant, like, someone who's from another country.
But their native language is Spanish. Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying, I wonder if the language is native speaker.
Is it all state or federal law that the kids can be offered standardized assessments in their own language? In a native?
No, the voters of Massachusetts, when they voted on, no longer offering any type of bilingual education like that. Just made that decision.
Including assessment?
Yeah.
Yep.
But Mr. Burke's, the STAR assessment that we give, can we give in Spanish?
Yes.
So we do offer it to students sitting in the university, right?
How many students? Is there a percentage of students that take the STAR in for a native language? And we know-
There is. We are going to be more, more able to gather that number after the middle-of-year assessment because there's a more standard definition around who should have the opportunity to take it. Like, if you believe a student has literacy in their native language, they should be taking it so you can compare the results. Right now, we don't have a consistent use of that.
So now we'll kinda skew the chart that we looked at before and compare your STAR assessment to MCAST since they are able to take the STAR in their native language and the MCAS? No.
So no, that STAR is the English STAR results that we included in that number.
Right.
But the other thing that complicates it is-
If they can take those assessments in their native language, so math, if the math is in their native language and they're better on STAR and not so good on the MCAS, I would reflect it. Then we'd have to kinda change something so that, find a better way to support them or get them to learn the English language, because we'd set them up for failure in that sense. If they're not passing the MCAS by 10th grade, or if they came here from somewhere else, not speaking the English language, then we're setting them up not even to get it to both. I think there should be a better way of assessing those students to make them more successful and make the process more fair for those students.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke.
Do they, do they have the teachers actually take this MCAS test?
Many, many of the schools on their November 7th Professional Development Day Many, many of the, um, schools on their November seventh professional development day had that as part of their, um, their work time, and, uh, teachers were actually doing something called slicing the MCAS. So looking at a question like you did, you did tonight and identifying the specific skills the students would have to be proficient at in order to be successful in questions at their grade level.
Uh, but, um, Ms. Chisholm, most of the questions are not released publicly. So we can only, um, there's only a few questions for grade level and category, but we're just, um, public. So they can't, they, they don't have access to taking all the assessments.
Right. The old, well, the old MCAS, they used to put online. I re, I recall.
Yes.
Release items.
They res, they do release items, yeah.
Yeah.
But not all.
But not, and especially since it's a new assessment, they, they don't.
There was nothing to release.
They release a few.
At least a few.
Yeah. Uh, and then the other, the other question I had was, um, it just did something that Dennis hit on, uh, was, um, it occurred to me that the, the pacing problem, it would work better if you had groupings of kids. Because if you do have a whole group of kids that are stuck on, just say, chapter two, okay? Then it would be beneficial if they could stop, because you're not, in math, my experience had been, if you're not good with chapter two, anything that follows, you're gonna have a problem with. And then you've got kids that aren't going to get to the end of the curriculum because we're staying around chapter two too long. And so even with, with grades, do they ever move children from one grade to another in smaller groups? Where you're in sixth grade, but you take seventh grade math? Do they do that kind of thing?
Each school responds differently, and we can talk about what the individual schools do. For example, McMahon has a period of the day called differentiated core. So they're blending kids by skill. Ideally, we would say, these students, you know, who are in fifth and sixth grade, who need a specifically, uh, so a specific support for a skill set, we're pulling them together and providing them. So the teachers, for example, and they're consistently regrouping the kids at McMahon's. So they created groups of students and said, we're gonna teach them these specific skills because this is what they need in addition to their math. In that initial grouping, they used the end of year STAR assessment, I believe it was. And then when they were working with the students, like, oh, that's, this student understands this skill. So they regrouped the kids again, very responsive in nature, right? So there's one school's example of.
Can I interrupt you real quick with that? It just seemed that, I noticed McMahon seemed to jump up quite a bit in math. Do you think that might be, I mean, I, I was just, I was gonna ask that as an aside after, but I was surprised at how well McMahon did in math on the, the boys' math, um, percentage of students at or above.
Yeah.
And I, I, would you attribute that score?
Well, that's part of it, you know, there's, there, there are teachers there that are very focused on what their collaboration time looks like. So if you remember, we've extended the day so that the student, the teachers have collaboration time where they can sit down and interact with each other, and they're authentically planning. There are schools in our district that are really getting teachers together to roll up their sleeves and say, what should we do? How should we move forward? So that we don't get stuck on chapter two, as your example, right? Who needs what and how do we respond? But some schools are doing, um, a stronger example of that. So we've got some exemplars that we need to learn from across the district, to answer your question, yeah.
Yeah, just, if I could follow, finish, oh, two quick questions based on that, what, uh, Niles just said. Um, I thought it was interesting that the dean and the high school were at a lower level in reading than they are in math. I would think that would be the reverse. Is that just me? I mean.
In, well, if there, especially if there's English language learners, they typically would perform higher in math.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that, that's a higher percentage there.
It could be.
And the high school as well. I mean, it's, I mean, it's a, you know, striking, I mean, the grades are great, but it was a significant.
Right.
Um, difference.
Yeah.
Um, and then, let's see, one more question. All right, let me see. Oh, did anybody ever thought of having the, uh, maybe we can talk to Mike Mararti and distribute the old questions to, uh, the board of commissioners for the education board and see how they would do on the, uh.
On that test, yeah.
On the test.
Yeah, it's interesting.
I mean, they're the ones that are, you know, having the kids do it. How would they fare?
How would they fare on it?
I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna know myself. Thank God we didn't have them. I think they're done right though, it's a fortune.
Very good.
Fortune to me is that. But, uh, I, I just thought that'd be, that'd be interesting, how many, you know, maybe we'll give Mike it.
Have them take it and see how they fare.
Who, how would they fare? I mean, how would anybody really fare? I mean, there's some bright, bright kids, you know.
Yeah. And, you know, they've elevated the bar and they've elevated the rigor of the assessment. It's becoming more difficult and to the point, I, actually, you made an important point earlier, like, we're graduating students, right? But are they authentically ready for their college, for their career? It's not just college in Holyoke public schools, right? And I'm experiencing this now, I'll tell a quick story. I'm having an electrician work on my house, right? And he says, there's not enough electricians in Holyoke. Like, there's a whole generation that we skipped, and the average age of electricians that are accessible in Holyoke. And Ian Daria, who is a parent at Metcalf, was telling me the story about, like, it can't just be college, right? What solid career options are we offering? And you gotta know the math. You've gotta know the math, whether if you're gonna be in any of those careers as well. So what are we doing as a district to authentically prepare everyone to do well?
I just remember I wanted to ask you, if I could, is, you, you had talked about the difference in the classrooms. When we were in school, they would have three basic levels. You had your advanced, uh, students that read, and they were grouped up to a different group. Then you would have the middle group, and then you'd have the lower group, which, which would be, but they're all in the same class, all reading the same materials, and the teachers able to concentrate on, you know, a little bit of attention to group A, a little, you know, a little to group B, and then more into that, into the C group. You were talking about separating your advancement. Um, you know, it hurts the people that are advanced not to be able to go ahead and finish. How, how do we, how, is, you said that's by school choice to do that?
Well, there's guided reading, I think that's more universal.
Right, so in the, in those lower grades, so I, to Dennis's point earlier, that culture shift, the culture shift is really around that aggressive monitoring in a way that helps students set, helps teachers and students set goals. And then where's the structure in the day? So in the lower grades, there's a structure for addressing their instructional need, that goal, but then also addressing the grade level instruction. So a student is seeing a grade level text every day too. But they're also with, with guided support. But then they're also getting, building their reading skills through that targeted intervention or their targeted guided reading. In the grades that are like beyond third grade, um, it's requires a structure that McMahon has intentionally put in place so that kids are getting grade level instruction with some differentiated differentiation in the classroom. But then there's also that intentional structure to address the targeted goals that are, um, identified in the STAR assessment that help. So those, that gives the opportunity for kids to see quick wins because then that does help to shift the culture. They feel successful, they start to see growth over time, and they'll get, they'll narrow that gap between where they're and where they need to be.
It's kind of similar to the program toward last year.
P three.
What's it called?
P three.
P two.
Ms. Chisholm, I have a few more questions about, you know, students and that, including programs during this year. If, uh, there's a way to see how they do on the, uh, the MCAS also.
Yeah, so we did, we did separate them. Uh, and we actually saw that they did better than, a little bit better than the other types of students and across, and across the district. But remember, that was a self-selecting group of kids because last year was offered, the parents opted into the program. This year, it's for everybody in grade six to eight that have to go. So it'll be interesting to see how they do on this year. They did perform better last year. But I think we need more data to say that it's really good. My sense is that we'll see a little bit of an opt. There's more, there's, there definitely is more motivation than maybe, how well that results into actual learning or whatever. It's a common one.
Before the MCAS is ta, is taken, uh, we noticed, I know, that students, a lot of students, teachers know, they know the subject and everything else, but they can't put it on paper. How, how do we help those students to get to put it on paper? Because you know and I know that students, they answer the questions and they can put it on a blackboard, they can put it on, write it on paper and everything else, but for some reason or other, they get tight and they just can't get it on the MCAS score. How, how do we work to get that student to perform on the, on the test?
So this year, there is a strong emphasis on writing. So if I, I, I write what I know to reveal what I think, and I write what I think to reveal what I know, right? So a lot of the schools are working very precisely on, if we translate you becoming a strong thinker and getting it on paper, it changes the way that you're understanding pretty much every other subject. Because in mathematics, there's reading, in science, there's reading, and writing. So we would say, when we think about the schools that are intentionally providing rigorous professional learning and looking at student work, like Sullivan has been doing this for a while, right? So they, they take a look at student writing product, they take a look at how's the student doing as measured by predetermined criteria on a rubric. And then they say, what do we need to teach different in order for our students to become better writers to get their thoughts on paper? So that when they are on MCAS and have to write constructive response or anything, that they're thinking in a different way. Now, other schools like McMahon, Lawrence, Lawrence is diving deep into writing, young students, right? How do they reveal their thinking on paper? So across the district, we have a stronger emphasis on what writing looks like for students and how are we teaching students to become better writers and better thinkers about any content area, really? So we are working on it.
They just quickly, um.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, thanks, Ms. Chisholm, thank you, Mary.
Congratulations.
Uh, in your folder, you have a letter from me to the Holyoke High Community about community conversations about, uh, acceptance, um, race, uh, that we're gonna host in the next month. Uh, this is open to community partners, staff, students and parents. Uh, it's being facilitated by, um, professional trainers through the, um, that, uh, that's part of our partnership with Nellie May. We just won a large grant from the Nellie May Foundation. We have that letter in your folder as well for community and family engagement. And instead of bringing a different organization to work with our schools around dialogues on regarding, uh, race, acceptance, uh, bias, we are, we're gonna use their trained facilitators to begin this work. And from the, from this listening tour, uh, that they're gonna, um, lead over the next month, those, those recommendations are gonna be given to the diversity task force that I'm working on establishing in the district. So just wanted you to have that information. There's also a, um, the, the announcement about high school redesign. I was hoping to have it for tonight, we're not quite ready. But within the next two to three days, there will be correspondence about high school in Holyoke next year. Um, I'd happy to talk to any school committee member about, about it. Um, we are gonna ask the teachers who've been working on the design, Joel Chisholm, Megan Harrison, um, Jake Bellanger and Marcus Holt to come to the next school committee meeting so you can hear from them directly about the high school redesign, um, efforts and what that means for the next school year. That information is coming out, um, soon. Um, and then, um, in my report, you also have, uh, just a, uh, there's a couple of events coming up. Special education task force, all that information's in here. The first meeting is next week. Um, there is a special ed, uh, PAC meeting, a parent advisory council meeting tomorrow evening at Elace. Um, and there are, there is, Metcalf has their annual Discover Puerto Rico event tomorrow, Thursday evening, and it will be held at Holyoke High. Um, the, um, last thing I wanna point your attention to is the number of students that have arrived from Puerto Rico. The number just continues to ri, uh, increase. We have now eighty-three students who are registered, um, thus far. Uh, we are work, I, the commissioner, the acting commissioner was here in Holyoke today briefly, and he did assure me that the state is working on providing additional funding. You can see the impact that our schools have already had in terms of arrivals, um, to Holyoke from Puerto Rico since the, uh, or we'll continue to update you on that, as well as funding that we, hopefully, will receive for these new students. Uh, that closes my comments.
Any other announcements?
I see, I see, as, as you talked about, all those students coming in would be affected with graduation worries and stuff.
Yeah, I, I talked to him about that today. We have two seniors that arrived, uh, and the concern is, those seniors haven't taken the MCAS. And I did make a plea that they're almost issued from the, their school in Puerto Rico and that they would not have to take the MCAS. That's what I've asked, and the concern is, they are looking into it. Right now, the guidance is to have them take the MCAS, but I have obvious concerns about those students, um, given that they arrived here for their senior year and they may not, especially in English and the arts, to ask them to pass that, uh, that requirement, um, you know, that, that may be the difference between getting a diploma and not getting a diploma. The hope is that the institution they were in in Puerto Rico can still issue them a diploma because they completed at least three years of coursework and credits there. And, uh, can we discount their fourth year as a completion of the next year?
It just seems to me that the state, well, it's just so unreasonable. I don't know, like, common sense, I think, is left.
Yeah, I, we don't want those kids to go back. They wanna go to college, you know, we.
Yeah, common sense would, 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 would make them, I don't know.
So we have two seniors that arrived.